Good morning, everyone. This is the May 14, 2020, meeting of the Nassau County Planning Commission. I'd like to open up this meeting with a moment of silence for all those that have suffered and had losses during this crisis. Thank you. Keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Also, I'd like to recognize all the sacrifices that have been made by our first responders and people that are considered essential workforce. They've kept the economy going and kept us safe from harm. So again, I want to commend everybody for the hard work, including our staff, for making this, what is this, third meeting via Zoom. So we've had quite some success. With that being said, Marty, you want to do the roll call? Or do you want me to do it? You're gonna have to unmute yourself, Marty.
I can do it. First Vice Chair Greenfield.
Why don't you unmute everybody to start?
Second Vice Chair Shapiro.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Blue.
Present.
Commissioner Ellerby.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Shaper.
Present.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
And Chairman Glennon.
Yeah. Okay. I will acknowledge we received a transcript from, what was it? April 30, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Let me just go through a statement that we have prepared for today. Due to the coronavirus emergency, state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings pursuant to government formal executive orders 220, at now issued on March 12, 2020, suspending the open meetings law, the May 14, 2020 Nassau County Planning Commission meeting will be held electronically via Zoom and may be viewed by the public via live stream on Zoom as described below. The public may send in their comments for the public portion of the meeting via email to the address below. I will give it to you in a second. And the Nassau County Planning Commission will review and consider these public comments prior to making a final decision. Our recording of the meeting will be posted on the Nassau County Planning Commission Instead of a public, the public, maybe mute everybody again, John. Instead of a public meeting for the public to attend in person, members of the public may listen to or log on to the video conference. Access instructions for Zoom is available on the Nassau County Planning Department webpage. Its web address is HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW NASSAWCOUNYNY.gov forward slash 2856 forward slash planning hyphen department. Final decisions will be made on items contained in A, B, and E at today's meeting. Hold on. The Nassau County Planning Commission will be accepting public comments for the public portion of the May 14, 2020 Planning Commission meeting today by email. That can be sent to ncpc@nassawcountyny.gov. Again, ncpc@nassawcountyny.gov. The Nassau County Planning Commission will accept public comments via email for agenda items contained in section C and D before making a final decision on the matter. The public will have until 4:00 PM on Monday, this coming Monday, May 18, at 20, by email to submit their comments for items contained in the agenda items C and D to the email address I just provided. Late comments received after May 18 at 4:00 PM will not be accepted or considered. A second meeting of the Nassau County Planning Commission will take place after public comments are received, reviewed, and considered by the commission for each item contained in agenda section C and D on Thursday, May 21, 2020, at 9:00 AM, where the Nassau County Planning Commission will make a final decision on each item contained in agenda sections C and D. This meeting will also be conducted using virtual meeting program and access instructions will be provided on the Nassau County Planning Department homepage. So that's, that's what it is. If you have any questions, go to the Nassau County Planning Commission. So let me say something? So if you have any questions, go to Nassau County Planning Commission homepage. You'll find the instructions that I just read, as well as how to submit any comments, public comments. So let's move on to our agenda. The major subdivision application, Willow View Estates.
Sure. Section B, this is major subdivision application, determine completeness and adequacy of second revised draft environmental impact statement dated April 2020 pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act, NCPC File Number 1997P1 map Willow View Estates, 99 Meadow Drive Woodmere Golf Club in Woodmere, Town of Hempstead, Village Lawrence, and Village Woodsburg. Planning staff received a preliminary application, subdivision application, Willow View Estates, developers proposing to subdivide 116.72 acre Woodmere Golf Club into 284 single family lots located in the ham of Woodmere, Village of Lawrence, and the Village of Woodsburg. Properties also within 300 feet of the Village of Cedarhurst, which gives that village subdivision's subdivision approval jurisdiction.
No, I am. I didn't push start.
Oh, and we gotta, we gotta get the... On January 31, 2019, the Planning Commission commenced a 30-day coordinated review under SEQA and caused to be circulated to all identified involved agencies the full environmental assessment form with attachments and providing notice to all identified involved agencies that the Nassau County Planning Commission intended to act as secret lead agency for this application. On March 7, 2019, Planning Commission designated themselves as lead agency. On April 12, 2019, the applicant submitted to staff a draft DEIS scope. On May 9, 2019, staff identified potential weaknesses in the draft scope. Staff identified these potential weaknesses in an email to the commission, the applicant, on May 9, 2019. On May 24, 2019, applicant submitted a revised draft scope to staff. On March 30, 2019, the commission acknowledged receipt of the revised draft DEIS scope, opened public comment period for 45 days in July 15, and scheduled public scoping hearing date for June 26, 2019. On July 11, 2019, the commission extended that public comment period to August 14, 2019. On September 26, 2019, the Planning Commission adopted the final scope. On December 6, 2019, the applicant submitted the DEIS to staff. On January 30, 2020, the Planning Commission determined that the DEIS wasn't sufficient for public review and requested the applicant submit a revised DEIS to address all the outstanding comments. On February 26, 2020, the applicant submitted their first revised DEIS, which staff distributed to the Planning Commission technical staff for review completeness and whether or not it addressed all the outstanding comments. New York State Governor declared a state disaster emergency due to COVID-19 pandemic on March 7, 2020, and subsequently issued executive orders 202.1, 202.3, 202.4, 202.6, 202.7, 202.8, 202.10, 202.13, 202.14, 202.15, and 202.18 restricting public and private businesses and requiring postponement or cancellation of nonessential gatherings. Nassau County Executive issued a declaration of local state of emergency on March 13, 2020. On March 12, 2020, the Planning Commission determined that the first revised DEIS was not complete and therefore not yet adequate for public review. April 13, 2020, applicant submitted a second revised DEIS, which staff distributed on April 14 to DPW Technical Staff and the Nassau County Planning Commission for review of completeness. On May 8, all reviewers confirmed that there are no further comments regarding completeness. According to the secret process, the lead agency has 30 days, which is today, to make determination of completeness from date of submission. We have here today...
Quick question, John. Was the applicant able to do all that while they were in the waiting room?
Yes. The Chris Brown is here and is the, as the applicant's attorney. We also have on the line their engineering firm. Was it more than just begonias? I'm sorry, repeat that.
Was that, was that Len?
Yeah. What did we do that? What did we?
Len?
I didn't hear the question.
Len, are you trying to say something?
All right, then we'll talk, we'll talk about it later because I've got this Zoom meeting, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we have counsel here for the applicant?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Christian Brown. Name?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep. Your appearance for the record, please.
It's Christian Brown, Sanmore, Koshignano, PLLC 333, Earl Lobbington Boulevard, Suite 601, Uniondale, for the applicant.
Good morning. Thanks.
Good morning, everyone.
Floor is yours.
Good morning. So Mr. Procas recited the history, I think. We're at the point where the commission, we're asking the commission to now deem the, the DI, DEIS complete and move into the public review process. The commission staff and counsel have worked out language in a resolution, which I hope you'll adopt today, that sets a calendar for the public review. And we understand that the commission is going to exercise its right to call a public hearing as part of the review process. And of course, because of the executive orders that are in place, that can't be done at the moment. So there's language in the resolution, which we have reviewed and which, you know, upon which we agree, that the public hearing will occur within 60 days of, of such a hearing being allowed. And then comments will be considered for a period thereafter of no less than 30 and no more than 45 days. And there's some language also that, that says that if, you know, if none of this is able to happen by the end of August of 2020, the commission and the applicant will, will work in good faith to, you know, come up with another schedule that will continue to move things along based on whatever the, the restrictions are in place at that point. So I've worked on the resolution with staff and counsel, and I thank them for their cooperation. And if that resolution is adopted, it's on consent of the applicant, and we hope you'll deem the DEIS ready to go into the next stage and move the process forward today.
And I just want to thank you for working with staff on this. I know these are difficult times, and I know this is a pretty big project. So I think what we're gonna do is two separate motions here. The first would be on the acceptance of the DEIS as complete, and then we would do a second one on... We keep getting feedback from somewhere. John, can you, it looks like everybody's muted. I don't know why we keep getting that.
Okay. Somebody keeps trying to enter.
No.
A member of the public. Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one question or make a comment on this? When and if we can hold this public hearing, I, I think we should hold it closer to the community and find a locale in, in the five towns vicinity to hold the hearing.
Yeah, I think that has been the game plan all along, so until these restrictions are lifted, I don't think we're gonna be...
Right, right. And that we should do a large enough venue that even when they are restricted, that people can spread out in an auditorium of a school or someplace like that, and we can, you know, still observe social distancing.
Right. And I, staff and, and counsel Brown will continue to work together as this develops.
We would have no objection to that, of course.
And lastly, I, I think it should be a night meeting to, to better accommodate the community.
Okay. Well, we'll be notified once the restrictions are lifted and the tolling agreement's gonna expire, so is there any other comment on the draft, acceptance of the draft DEIS?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So I would just like to, it's not so much a question for counsel, but just to sort of state for the record in terms of the process that we're at. We're at a stage where you have, you know, assertions in your environmental impact statement, and we're adopting it as complete and moving ahead and having the public comment on it. But that doesn't mean that I'm agreeing with the conclusions. For example, the conclusion that there's no need to mitigate CO2 emissions from the site, for example, or, or the conclusion that a green home would perhaps generate more CO2 than a conventional home. So, you know, those kinds of conclusions are all stuff that's now gonna be in the draft and it'll be available for public comment and, and discussion at the next step of the process. And I just wanted to make sure that counsel was aware, you know, those are still gonna be things that are gonna be questions as we move to the next stage of this process. So, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just provide some additional information for, for the public who are watching or who will watch this recording. As you'll see on the screen, the process, the flow chart is, is provided. Just to quickly recap, this, this step is required under SEQA. The County Planning Commission is the lead agency, and as a result, is required to conduct the process in accordance with, with the SEQA procedures and law. At this stage, we are at the, at the acceptance of the EIS, so that is the third blue box from the left. And as you will see, that...
The acceptance of the draft DEIS.
Exactly. When, what that does is essentially allow the public, the community, the involved agencies, the interested agencies, municipalities, et cetera, to view and comment on the, on the document. As Commissioner Lewis mentioned, the findings, the information contained in the DEIS is subject to public review and comment, and revisions will likely be made. So at this point, with the commission's vote today to accept the draft EIS as complete and commence the public comment period, the EIS will be posted on the county website for all to see and review. There will be an email link for the submission, as well as a mailing address for the submission of written comments.
And Sean, just so the public knows, this chart will be on the website, as will the recording of this meeting tomorrow.
Exactly. Just to also point out, in accordance with SEQA, and as John mentioned in his, in his report, the, the Planning Commission is required to, to determine the adequacy and the completeness of the draft EIS a maximum of 30 days after the submission of the DEIS by the applicant. And as John mentioned, we are at that date. And so again, the, the commission is under, is acting within the requirements and the mandates of, of SEQA and, and the process that it, that it spells out. The typical comment period under SEQA for an EIS with a, with a public hearing is 70 days. So as, as was mentioned, the comment period will be extended or is being extended, again, to give everybody an opportunity to review, given the, you know, the challenging times that we are living in. So just wanted to make that, that point again for, for the commission's application and for the, for the public, for public information.
Thank you, Sean. And counsel, I assume you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do. And I, I would note also that, that this will actually result in a much longer, probably much longer than normal comment period, because the comments, any, any member of the public after today will be free to comment. It's, it's the, the only, you know, process that we have to really wait for is to be able to convene for a public hearing. And because that may be some time away, we've agreed to allow the public to continue to comment while we wait to convene for a public hearing. So this will result in a much longer, you know, total public review process than would be normal. And then we, you know, we consent to that. There's no objection. But it certainly will give the public a, a large, large amount of time to look through the document.
And that's a good thing, given the size and scope of this project.
Yes, yes.
I appreciate that. Any other commissioners? Okay, not seeing the hearing, anyone else? I'll entertain a motion on 1997P1 to accept the DEIS as complete.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that the Nassau County Planning Commission deemed the draft environmental impact statement complete for public review pursuant to SEQA for the, for the subdivision map of Willow's Estates, NCPC File 1997P1.
Second.
Motion made seconded. All right, I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Blue?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaper?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Shapiro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Greenfield?
Yes.
Chairman Glennon, yes. Okay. So now we'll move into the second resolution, adopting a tolling resolution until the expiration of the executive orders in place and other governmental restrictions on social distancing. Is, is that correct, counsel? Is, is it's gonna expire at that time? Or you wanted to revisit it in August? Does it have two separate expiration dates?
The way it's written, and Mr. O'Brien can confirm, is that the public hearing will take place within 60 days of, you know, the lifting of an order or the modification of an order that allows for such a gathering. If, if that, such a modification never occurs, and we find ourselves at the end of August, then the, the, the parties, so to speak, will come back together to try to come up with another way of, of dealing with the public hearing issue.
Okay, so the motion would be that it's ruled into the expiration of the executive orders, or if the executive orders have not expired by the end of August, that the parties would reconvene and discuss it later date.
Correct. Or they don't have to, right, expire. It could, could, if the executive order is even modified so as the public could convene in some manner, then we would, we would hopefully move forward. But if, if it's just not possible, then by the end of August, we'll have to revisit the, you know, the public hearing part of this.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, before we, please, the, the, the commission will need to then vote to, to set the, the public comment, the public hearing. So that action will come back to the commission at some point for, for calendaring.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, a question. How do we refer to this document? We haven't read it into the record, if it needs to be, in order to make a resolution.
Well, I think it's the recommendation that we're making for the resolution and accordance with the motion and what we just discussed.
All right, you can refer to it as the tolling resolution.
Yeah, okay. Then I'll make a, a motion to accept the tolling resolution as discussed, as it applies to Willow View Estates, NCPC File Number 9, 1997P1.
Second.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Warren?
Mr...
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Blue?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaper?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Shapiro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Greenfield?
Yes.
And Chairman Glennon, yes. Okay. Good luck.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you again to Sean and Bob and John for all your help, and we look forward to continuing.
Yeah, thank you. Even under regular times, this is a difficult undertaking, and they really stepped it up.
They have done a great job.
So, and thank you for working closely with them.
You're welcome. Have a great day, everyone.
Be safe.
Quick question. Can we just clarify, like, will this be posted on the website? What, what is the notice that would go out in terms of indicating to the public that they could submit comments on this draft?
So the, yes, the, the notice of completion, which is an actual document, will be circulated to all of the involved agencies and the interested agencies as defined by SEQA. It'll also be submitted to anyone else who has submitted a comment or a question over the past year and a half. The electronic version of the EIS will be posted to the website for free download. The DEC will get a copy, so you'll, you'll be able to go on the DEC website as well to download it if you choose to do so. And again, if there, we will do our best to broadcast the notice of completion, again, to all of the, you know, potentially impacted parties going forward.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on to agenda item C, the major subdivision final approvals. Who's analyst, John?
I am. Give me one second.
Yep.
The next case is an extension of time to file resolution of major subdivision final map approval, NCPC File Number 1967F7, map of South Bay Club Condominiums, 6 Fifth Avenue and Incorporated Village of East Rockaway, Section 42, Block 81, Lots 215, and 237. The, this application received final subdivision approval on August 9, 2018. In October 17, 2019, the Planning Commission granted an extension of time on this application for the subdivision of a 9,640 square foot parcel into five single family townhouse units and one common lot to be owned of, owned by homeowners association. On April 30, 2020, Nassau County Planning Commission final subdivision approval is set to expire. According to the applicant's attorney, the applicant is seeking an extension of time to file the resolution, Nassau County Planning Commission subdivision approval. This is an app, this is the applicant's second request for an extension of time, as the subdivision map was initially approved on October 31, 2018, and a prior extension was granted until April 30, 2020. Subsequent to the Nassau County Planning Commission signing off on the approved map of South Bay Club, the applicant's attorney forwarded the map to the Village East Rockaway for signature by the planning board. In accordance with the prior village approvals, the village indicated that all prior village approvals has lapsed due to the length of time between the village approvals and the planning commission approval. As such, the applicant submitted new building permit application to the Board of Trustees application, zoning board application, and the planning board application to the village for, to renew all prior approvals. The applicant appeared before the Board of Trustees on August 8, 2019, received oral approval for a special permit. Applicant next appeared before the Village Planning Board on April, I'm sorry, November 20, 2019. 20, 2019, and received subdivision approval pending approval from the zoning board for area variances. Applicant received the last approval from the zoning board on March 25, 2020. However, does not anticipate having the map, the approved map signed by the village and filed with the county prior to April 30, and is respectfully requesting extension of time from the planning commission. Bill Venesso is on line here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Good morning, counsel.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. William Venesso, Forcelli, Deegan, Tirana, 333 Earl Overton Boulevard, Uniondale, New York, here on behalf of the applicant, Forbit's Realty LLC. As Mr. Parakis has summarized, this is a this is a subdivision map. It's the map of South Bay Club. It's a proposal to build five townhomes on a property situated in the Village of East Rockaway. Back some several years ago, more than several years ago, we had received all necessary approvals from the village to do that, to make the project go. The town, the Board of Trustees had to approve a special permit. The zoning board had to approve it, and the planning board had to approve the subdivision. We then went to the Nassau County Planning Commission, and unfortunately, the the clients had financial difficulties, so it took a very long time to get our maps and engineering done. Finally got through the Nassau County Planning Commission, as noted by Mr. Parakis in 2018. And then by that time, all of the approvals in East Rockaway, which had been extended several times, had lapsed because the village was too long between their approval and the approval of the county map. So we had to go back to the Board of Trustees, to the planning board, to the zoning board, the last of which being the zoning board, which was approved at the end of March. We have found, we have got those reinstated. If we are able to get this extension of time, we will have the map, the map signed by all necessary parties, and they are prepared to file. So they are ready to go finally and and put an end to this very lengthy process and actually be able to construct the proposed development.
Okay, counsel, you understand that this is a final extension, request for an extension? After that, you'd have to refile?
Yes, we do not expect to need any any further refiling, and we know that there's no additional extension available.
Okay, so the request is would be through October 31, 2020, but it sounds like it'll be done before then, but.
It should certainly be done before then.
Okay. Commissioners, any comments, questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to extend the time.
No, Marty, no.
Yep. Can't do it.
Yeah, you have to cut it, you have to, this will be addressed next Thursday.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, very good. All right, so just so you know. Right, we're gonna reserve now, wait for public comment, but it's, I really don't see any problems with it, but that's fine.
Understood.
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you, counselor. Be safe.
Thank you, you too.
Okay. Next.
The next case is.
Just say it's video.
And C P C file 1982 F3, map of Woodbury Villas, Phase 2, 884 Jericho Turnpike in Woodbury, Town of Oyster Bay. The. On September 10, 2015, planning commission granted preliminary subdivision approval. On October 18, 2018, planning commission granted final approval of a 16.78 acre parcel into 76 multi-family residential townhouse units with two car garages, pool, tennis courts, and a 4,715 square foot recreation building and one common area to be owned by an HOA. The final map will be filed in two phases for funding reasons. On December 12, 2019, the Nassau County Planning Commission granted an extension of time to file final subdivision approval. On June 12, 2020, the extension is set to expire. According to the applicant's attorney, Phase 1 of the map is filed. Additional time is needed to post bonds, escrow, inspection fees, and record Phase 2 of the map. Here today, we have Al D'Agostino and his applicant, Lee Pasavilla.
Morning, counselor.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. John, this is Albert D'Agostino, Minerva D'Agostino, P C, 107 South Central Avenue, Valley Stream, New York, 11580 for the applicant. I believe that Mr. Parakis has accurately stated the application. I only have one question in terms of the extension. Does the, does the governor's order tolling time periods have any impact in terms of the the extension? Because I think that tolling period, which runs through tomorrow, provided for 56 days, I mentioned that in the event that it does, and we're entitled to that, we would ask for that, but if not, because I don't think that six months starts until that order permits it to start. But in any event, substance of the request was accurately stated by Mr. Parakis.
Yeah, counselor, I did ask that question earlier. It does not toll the time. So this would be your second and final extension.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Chairman. Did you say it does not toll the time?
Does not toll the time.
Okay.
So this this would be the second and final extension, which would go to 121220.
Right, and I'm sure you can understand, you know, the reasons. One, we're developing Phase 1, and the COVID shutdown shutdown has also impacted our ability to proceed in the fashion that we would like with respect to Phase 1 and then move on to Phase 2. But I thank you for your consideration of this request.
Yeah, if anything changed according to the law of the executive orders, and it was to be told, your second extension would be told in accordance with whatever is in place at the time.
Fair enough. I thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so we're gonna hold this over for final vote next week, and the public has a opportunity to submit comments, so. And the request is for an extension to December 12, 2020. Thank you, counsel. Be safe.
Thank you, be safe, and thank you all.
Okay, next.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, you got, O'Brien, you're gonna recuse yourself on this next matter?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, so let the record reflect. Let the record reflect that county council, O'Brien, has recused from this N C P C file 182020. Who's analyst, Jazz?
Yep. Okay, first minor subdivision is N C P C file number 182020. The applicants are Marty Holmes, L L C. This is for a two-lot subdivision in Roosevelt. Site location 17 East Pennywood Avenue, Roosevelt, New York, 11575 in the Town of Hempstead, Section 55, Block 332, Lots 266, 267, and 269. The 9,321.36 square foot area subject property is situated on the north side of East Pennywood Avenue in the hamlet of Roosevelt in the Town of Hempstead. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 88.07 feet of frontage on East Pennywood Avenue into two separate parcels. Proposed Lot A will have 48 feet of frontage, total of 48,000 square foot area parcel. Proposed Lot B will have 40 feet of frontage, a total of 4,521.36 foot area parcel. The Town of Hempstead Board of Zoning Appeals has approved the request for variances for the proposed subdivision. Lot A, variances for subdivision of lot lot area front width from an on-street line to front setback line, maintain dwelling with detached garage on a lesser lot. Case number 192/20. Lot B, variances for subdivision of lot lot area front width from an on-street line to front setback line, construct dwelling with garage. Case number 191/20. Here to speak on the application is Mike Gregory.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
All okay. I'm here representing Mr. Dennis Marty of Marty Holmes.
I need you, I need you, I need your name and address for the record.
I apologize. Michael Gregory of Permits R Us, L L C, 64 Division Avenue, Suite 104, Levittown, New York, 11756.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
As Ms. Paz had stated, this was granted by the Town of Hempstead on April 15. The case was heard on February 12. We did obtain approval from the Town of Hempstead to create two lots. I just want to make a minor correction, which Jazz had said, Miss Paz, the one lot is 4,800 square feet, not 48,000 square feet. And it is lot.
You wouldn't have needed the variance if it was 48,000 then.
I know. And in addition, the the tax lot numbers are tax lot number 266, 267, and 169, not lot two, not tax lot number 269. I don't know if that matters for the record, I just want to make that clear. But we did attain approval, and there were conditions set by the Town of Hempstead. The conditions are the typical conditions that the Board of Zoning and Appeals grants, that the houses shall be maintained as owner occupied, as as far as the existing house, and it shall be maintained as a one-family dwelling. As far as the new house that shall be constructed to the westerly portion of this property, it will be constructed as a single-family home, which would consist of four bedrooms and two and a half beds. There is not a separate entrance to go into the basement, and the Town of Hempstead will not allow that. That is in their covenant restrictions that we have to file.
Are these going to be owner occupied?
Yes, sir, it will be owner occupied. That was a condition as well, and it will remain a single-family dwelling with one gas meter and one electrical meter.
Okay.
And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I I do have some questions. I'm familiar with the with that with that block. So there's a convenience store on Nassau Road, and I believe that there is a a drive, is there an entranceway on Pennywood that to get into the convenience store? So I'm just wondering, where is that driveway going to be located? Because it's pretty close to to Nassau Road, which is, you know, major roadway. And and I'm just thinking about, you know, when you're lined up to make that right or left turn out of Pennywood, is that going to cause some sort of a traffic hazard there? Because I'm not really sure where the driveway is going to be located.
Yes, I'm looking at Google Street View right now. It appears that the curb cut for the convenience store on the corner is about 20 feet from the westerly side of this property, and our curb cut, our proposed curb cut will be approximately, I would say, 10 feet off the property line. So we do have the distance of 30 feet, approximately 30 feet between the two curb cuts. As far as, I'm just looking at this Google Street View. You know, and there is, there is a parking strip between the two properties. So if you, if you're facing the property, our westerly line has parking spaces along the easterly side of the convenience store. As far as traffic is concerned, in my personal opinion, I don't see any traffic concerns. That would be up to a traffic expert, but.
Well, what I, what what I'm suggesting is, because.
Go right into that one.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, I know where you're going.
Okay, so so you've got, you know, you've got cars that are parked there, you know, in front of the house. Can there be like no, a no parking sign or something that's put up so that that does free, you know, free up the person who lives there pulling out of their driveway, not contending with, you know, the parking there, sightlines for pulling out? I just think that adding another house there is going to add more congestion and and, you know. You know, I can see this being more of a hazard. I mean, I'm familiar with that road. That road has a lot of people who park on the street, and I just see that that whole corner area becoming like a big problem with, you know, cars parked on the road, the person trying to pull out the driveway, people stop at the stop sign. I see it as a nightmare right now.
What I will propose is that I will speak with the Town of Hempstead Highway Department and to see what is entailed to get this type of sign. I don't see it foreseen being a problem with the Town of Hempstead working with us to send an inspector out and see the conditions. And as we can obtain this sign, I will contact the Department of Highway Department sometime today. They are unfortunately are limited, and I would have to leave a message, and they have to return my call, because I did call the other day on another matter, and it took them two days to return my phone call.
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not suggesting that that's the answer. I'm not a traffic specialist or anything, but and I don't know whether putting a sign up there is going to help the situation, because as the owner of the property, you know, is that right for them not to be able to park in front of their own house? So I'm not, I don't know what the answer is. I'm just asking for it to be looked at more, because you've got, you know, that house is located, you know, what is it, 30 feet away from the convenience store's entranceway? So I just think that there needs to be some consideration given for, you know, the parking, the turn, you know, the queuing for the stop sign and the person's driveway and where that's going to be located exactly, so.
I I would, I would agree with Commissioner Warren here. I've seen instances in in other areas with a very similar situation where there's a no parking along the residences next to retail establishments on a major road, as she described and as this map shows, and it's quite commonly done for the benefit of the residents and also for the site issues that have been raised and so on. So I would agree that.
Just so you know, we're not going to take any action on this today. It's going to be next week. So if you have answers to some of these questions before our next meeting, submit them.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll speak with my client, and I'll speak also with the Town of Hempstead to see what we could do. The reason why we have the driveway to the left of the premises is because the existing house to the right, their curb cut is right to the right of it. So having two curb cuts together, that was why this was designed this way. I'll see what we could do as far as possibly moving the curb cut over some more. I'll do the best that I can, and I will reach out to Mr. Parakis.
Great. All right. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, quick, quick question. The property directly across the street, how wide is that one?
The the residential dwelling?
Yeah, the 157, 156 lot, you see that?
Yes, sir. It is 40 feet wide.
Okay, I thought so. You can kind of see how the, the way the road cuts in, that's why that last lot is small, and that's why you had to get a variance. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do know that that those properties across the street do have a shared, they, it's almost like a shared driveway, but it, but they are separate driveways. So, you know, it's not out of character for the community to have the driveways that are sort of like shared or close together, like, I don't know. I mean, like I said, I, I'm just, I just would like it, you know, researched more to see what's going to, you know, be the safest and, you know, safest design for for the community. you know, safest, um, design for, um, for the community.
I will do my best and I will, uh, start that. I will start making those phone calls today and doing some more research. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Be safe and, uh, we look forward to hearing from you. Next is 1920.
Hi, this is NCPC File Number 192020. The applicant is Broadway Mike LLC. Very two-lot subdivision in Newcastle. Site location 157 Broadway, Newcastle, Westbury Postal Code, New York 11590, in the town of North Hempstead. Section 11, Block 99, Lots 12 through 15. The 10,500 square foot area subject property is situated on the southwest corner of Broadway and Covert Street in the hamlet of Newcastle in the town of North Hempstead. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has frontage on both Broadway and Covert Street into two separate parcels. Proposed Lot A will have 62.5 feet of frontage, a total of 5,500 square foot area parcel. Proposed Lot B will have 62.5 feet of frontage, a total of 5,000 square foot area parcel. The Town of North Hempstead Board of Zoning Appeals has approved the request for variances for the proposed subdivision. Variance to subdivide a property into two lots with insufficient lot width and maintain dwelling on lesser lot within a required side yard setback. Here to speak on the application is Andrea Curdo and the applicant.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. Andrea Sukales Curdo with the firm of Fortelli, Deegan, Tarrana on behalf of the applicant. Jazz, thank you for, um, helping me with that, um, presentation. The only thing I wanted to add was with respect to the variances, um, what we're proposing at 62.5 feet of lot width is actually much larger than all of the interior lots in this area. The average lot width is 50 feet, uh, for the interior lots. Um, so what we're, we're proposing is going to actually be a larger lot with respect to width. We do comply with lot area. Uh, 5,000 square feet is the required. Parcel A is proposed at 5,500 square feet and Parcel B is proposed at 5,000 square feet. Other than that, I think Jazz covered everything. Uh, we are proposing to demolish the existing house. It was too close to the side yard setback and the zoning board had denied that variance. Um, so we will be demolishing that house. Do you have any questions?
No. I mean, I don't. Does anybody else?
No.
Okay, so, uh, again, for the public that's listening, uh, you have until Monday afternoon at 4 o'clock to submit your public comment via email to the, I think it was. Uh, John, you want to give that email address again? Hold on, I might have it here. It is.
Yes.
Uh, you have till 4 o'clock on Monday for any submissions. And then we'll take action on it next week. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Do I appear next week as well?
Staff will get in touch with you, only if there's public comments that may need to be addressed.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Be safe.
Thank you. Be safe.
Thanks.
Okay, Jazz 2020, 20.
NCPC File 20 dash 2020. The applicant is SC SM Homes Incorporated. This is for two-lot subdivision, site location 2131 Van Nostrand Avenue in Merrick, New York, 11566 in the town of Hempstead. Section 56, Block 18, Lots 1,336 through 1,349. The 12,500 square foot area subject property is situated on the northwest corner of Van Nostrand Avenue and Winifred Drive in the hamlet of Merrick in the town of Hempstead. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has frontage on both Van Nostrand Avenue and Winifred Drive into two separate parcels. Proposed Lot A will have 65 feet of frontage by 100 feet, a total of 6,500 square foot area parcel. Proposed Lot B will have 60 feet of frontage by 100 feet, a total of 6,000 square foot area.
Yeah, get the dog.
The Town of Hempstead has issued a letter of zoning complaints for the proposed subdivision. The application is considered as of right. Here to speak on the application is Lee Kirsch.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission. Lee Kirsch, 33 Rogers Drive, Cold Spring Harbor, New York.
Good morning.
Good morning. I didn't know if you were hearing me. I don't see.
Good morning, Jazz. We hear you.
We, you hear us? Okay, so, uh, what Ms. Paz said is completely accurate. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me. It's as a right subdivision. Any, any other questions?
As you say, it's as of right. It's, it looks pretty straightforward. What is this photo we're seeing, the current, um, house?
Yeah, that's the house as it is now. The current house faces Van Nostrand. I want to put two, two, two lots on Winifred Drive.
So you're demolishing, uh, the current house? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, Mr. Greenfield. How are you?
Okay. All right. As long as I understand that, because there's no garage there. The two houses you propose are both have.
Yes, they're both are going to have two car driveways, plenty of off-road parking.
And, and garages. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, again, for the public, uh, if you would like to submit any comments, you have until Monday, uh, at 4 o'clock to be submitted through email, ncpc@nassaucountyny.gov. And then we'll take further action next week. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Be well.
All right, be safe.
You too. Bye-bye.
Commissioner Shapiro, I think the ball's in your court now.
Let me unmute you. Len? Len?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, Marty, do you want to start with item number one?
Um, yes. Give me one second here. Item number one is, um, NCPC Case Number 415120. This is, um, in the, uh, Town of Hempstead in the, in the East Atlantic Beach, uh, area. And this is for area variances. This is a, um, a substandard two-lot subdivision. Uh, the applicant intends to maintain a dwelling on, the existing dwelling on a lesser lot comprising, um, 1,800 square feet, 30 by 60, and construct a new dwelling, which is FEMA compliant, on a lot comprising, also comprising, um, 1,800 square feet, 30 by 60. That will have a garage over the raised first floor. This will require demolition, uh, of side yard deck, that quote, on a proposed lot. The property is zone residence C, which requires a minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet and a minute, minimum lot frontage of 50. The radius map indicates, um, uh, and the aerial indicates that many of the properties within a 200-foot radius of the subject property are 30 by 60, particularly along the west side of Brooklyn Avenue. Thus, the subdivision is generally in character with the surrounding neighborhood. Staff recommends local determination.
Okay, um.
Can I, can I ask? Question?
Well, we, um, decided that this was incomplete, Marty.
No, no, the second one.
No.
Okay. Am I?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Uh, I noticed like decks, deck areas on the original house. Is that, are those going to be demolished in order to get enough space?
Yes, the deck, the deck, uh, on the house to be maintained will be demolished.
And, and what is going to be though? You know, how much space will be between the, that house and the new house proposed?
Well, it, it's not compliant with respect to, uh, the zoning code. Uh, but, but again, if, if we can see an aerial, you'll, you'll notice that this is the way, uh, you know, this is the character of, uh, if we can get to the aerial. I, I can't do it, but the area, well, you could see that it'll be similar to the house to the north. And if you, if we can get to the aerial, you, you'll see that there, there, there isn't much you could see. What do you have, five feet? You don't have much, but this is.
You're at setback for about five feet.
Right, right. So this is the way it is. This is the.
Which is in character for that area.
Right.
The, the code is five feet in that neighborhood. It's not the incorporated village. It's the hamlet within the Town of Hempstead. The important thing, if you go back to the original slide of the empty lot, I think the significance. Okay, the new, uh, structure will be in accordance with the height of that building in the block away in the background to be FEMA compliant. Is that correct?
Right. That is correct. It'll be, uh.
Okay.
FEMA compliant.
Well, that's going to look like a hodgepodge.
Yeah.
Well, that's the new law. Every other one is at a different height.
Yep. Oh, no motion.
LD.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for a local determination.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 I'll do the, I'll do the roll call. You got it, Len?
Uh. Hold on.
Commissioner Warren.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Blue.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaper.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shapiro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Greenfield.
Yes.
Kevin Glennon, yes, okay. Last item on the agenda.
Marty, next one.
Okay, this is, sure, this is NCPC Case Number, uh, 415220. And this is, um.
Not hearing you very well, Marty.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is not a secret. This is for area variances for a substandard.
Marty, 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 Marty.
It's the best I can do. Um, right here. This is a proposed four-lot subdivision. The subject property, but it's pretty clear to the east. The existing dwelling, um, is to be demolished. The proposed lots 1, 2, and 3 each have a zoning compliant lot area in the 8,000 square, square foot range as well as zoning compliant frontages on both Washington Avenue and John Lane. Uh, the proposed lot 4 is a flag lot located on the southern portion of the property, abutting the Canal Creek.
Marty, you gotta get closer to that. Marty, it's gonna be hard to record it with a photographer.
I'm, I'm, I'm close to this. I'm, I'm close to everything I can be close to.
That's perfect.
You really couldn't hear a word of that. That last paragraph, I couldn't hear a word of it, really.
I mean, I have to turn it, I have to read, you know, okay.
Marty, no social distancing from your mic.
Okay, let me, let me try, try it again. Okay.
We gotta chip in.
Proposed Lot 4. Proposed Lot 4 is a flag lot located on the southern portion of the property, abutting the Canal Creek to the east. Proposed Lot 4 has a lot area of 15,860 square feet and a lot frontage of 15 feet on Washington Avenue, which is the width of the proposed driveway. The Res B zoning district requires a minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet and a minimum frontage of 55 feet. The driveway is L-shaped and runs for a length of about 220 feet. It should be noted that proposal, that proposal at 4, a flag lot, is, is over two times the required minimum lot area uh, in the resident B district. However, given the length and configuration of the driveway, driveway assurance, it should be provided that emergency vehicle access as well as delivery vehicle access can be accommodated, but more importantly, emergency vehicle access. Uh, much of the residential development, uh, in the area, well, some of the lots in the area, uh, are laid out in a non-conventional manner with lots of varying sizes, including, uh, some flag lots. Staff recommends that this be deemed incomplete and that a letter should be obtained by the fire department suggesting that proposed Lot 4 can be adequately, adequately served by, uh, fire trucks and emergency vehicles. And if not, how can the plan be modified to better accommodate the emergency vehicles and oversized vehicles? So. Any questions? Any comments?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
So that would be LD with the letter indicating.
Yes. No, no, no. That would be an incomplete. Right. We're deeming it incomplete. Any other questions? That is correct.
Commissioner.
Can, can we go back? Can we go back to the, the map with the proposed? Yeah, it's Lisa. Um, can, can we go back to the, um.
The layout.
The layout of where the houses will be? Marty, are we able to do that?
We have the map there. I guess, I can't do, I don't control it, but who's ever controlling it? Get to the, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Site plan.
Yeah, because I'm just trying to see where the lot. The next one?
The composite site plan. I.
Yeah, the.
I have it. It's on there and it was shown. I don't know why, why we can't see it now.
Okay, so.
But it's there.
Okay, so lot, lot, lot 4, lot 4 is, I'm not sure where lot 4, does that encompass that whole big area there? Like.
No, it doesn't.
Lot 3?
Exactly what it encompasses. Lot 4 encompasses the L-shaped driveway, which you see, right? Uh, and it encompasses the house with the front yard and the large area to the rear of the house. It does not encompass what is lot, what is, um, lot 3.
Okay, and then, uh, so the, is that like a turnaround? Is that like a, um, like, you know, a dead end with like a cul-de-sac? Is that, is that the drawing of the road? And what is the width of the, that little portion of the road that the dri, I guess it's, is it the driveway?
Well, the, the driveway is, is, is off of Washington Avenue. Washington Avenue is a dead, it, it dead ends pretty much, uh, where it says, uh, it's the end of Washington Avenue. And then the creek begins and it's, um, uh, the proposed driveway is essentially at the dead, near the dead end of Washington Avenue.
I, I think.
The question is what's the which is the driveway idea?
It looks like from the drawing, it looks like from the drawing that it's 15 feet at the mouth on Washington Avenue, which is extremely substandard. And. Right, that's what Lisa was asking.
Yeah, okay.
The more I look at it, the worse. And at the other end, to answer your question, it's not a typical turning radius of a cul-de-sac. We don't have a cul-de-sac turning radius at the other end.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and I don't really. I'm, I'm not sure, like, if there can be a reconfiguration either. I mean, I see where your circle is, but then go even further down and that it gets even narrower over there. Like, you know, so it's, I mean, when you think about.
It's not good at all. And, and you're right, with, with four lots, I, I can't imagine that it can be, uh, laid out in a, in a different manner. Uh.
So Marty, would this come back to us after it's, uh, they go to develop it or no?
Yes. Well, well, if the, if the town approved, if the town approves this, it will come back to us as a, as a minor four-lot subdivision.
Right, so then that would be the time to bring up any of those issues.
But again, we're still going to deem it incomplete and see if we can get.
We're deeming it.
I am hopeful. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm hopeful by making a motion, which I'm happy to do, to deem it incomplete, subject to review by the fire department and the fire chief. The owner will come to their senses when the fire chief tells him he cannot get a, a vehicle down that driveway. It seems to me the alternative would be a.
All right, so we got a motion for it.
Does lot 3 give up some of their? Okay, I mean, and maybe lot 3 has to give up some of the. Okay, I mean, and maybe lot three has to give up some of their, I don't know.
Okay, but.
They gotta figure out a way to reconfigure it.
All right, in the meantime, we're going to deem it incomplete and we'll get another hit at this if they approve it at the town of Hempstead.
Exactly.
They second a move.
I made the motion.
Second.
Okay, I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Glennon. Chair Glennon.
Incomplete.
Vice Chair Greenfield.
Incomplete.
Vice Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Blue.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaper. Rick.
Yes, oh, you don't hear me?
Yeah, I got you now.
Okay, incomplete.
Commissioner Warren.
Incomplete.
And Commissioner LB is not available, so last one is me and I deem it incomplete.
All right. All right, guys, thank you again and staff, tremendous job. Neil, just in the future, Neil?
Yes, I'm listening.
Yeah, if you could just stay stable because I keep shutting you off because it's distracting when you keep moving around like that.
Well, in the future, my computer should be working. I'm gonna have to get it fixed. It died right before the meeting, so, but, okay.
All right, everyone, be safe. Good week and we have a meeting.
Sean, can we buy Marty an early holiday gift and get him a headset with a microphone? Or just a microphone?
All right, guys, I gotta go. Be safe.
Take care, everyone.
Hey, well.
See you soon.
Bye-bye.
Goodbye, gang.
Take care, everybody.
Bye-bye, everyone.
Yeah. I, wait, 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 you could, I'll talk to you offline.
Yeah, you want to FaceTime?
We're recording right now.
I'll give you a call.
Bye-bye.